See anybody do it, but if anybody here wants to have a pro or a con comment on the Gordy Miller Minor Subdivision, that would be the time. I'm taking it those are the ones coming in waiting. Okay, I'll call again for either pro or con for the Gordy Miller Minor Subdivision input. Second call. Third and last call for any input on the Gordy Miller Minor Subdivision. Okay, hearing done, I will close the public hearing for the Gordy Miller Minor Subdivision. We will start back up in another four minutes to go on to the next public hearing. Have you guys heard of Bill Schaefer? That's all I heard.
I just heard the least. I wonder what he was talking about.
Okay, I'll open the next public hearing. This has to do with the 2020 Transportation Coordination Plan for the city bus on the public hearing. So I am looking for if there's any pros or cons on that from anybody. We're asking, we'll wait for a few minutes if there's any. This would be a time if you want to talk, if you want to state your position, either pro for or a con against it.
Do I need to stand up?
Yes, and you go up to the microphone so we can make sure we get it recorded properly.
Sure you can hear me. Okay, I'm David Pierce, I work for the city here, I help with the bus. Glenn is the main bus driver, I'm just kind of the bookkeeper.
She's the brains behind it.
And my real position's paralegal for the city attorney. I just wanted to mention to you that I received three letters the past few weeks from support for the bus. One was from the hospital, one was from the Sue Hansen, the nurse, and one was from the bicentennial. They, in those letters, they stated how much they needed the bus, how much they appreciated the bus, because most of the people that they deal with, their customers, couldn't get to their appointments or anything without the bus. The low-end people that have no cars and stuff, and they were very appreciative. They wanted to make sure that they sent these support letters, so we had it. So I just wanted to make sure that you knew we did get some and how much it is appreciated, and I appreciate the best. Any questions?
Would you please bring the letters down and give it to Diane so they can enter into the record?
I would.
Public hearing record?
Okay.
If you would please?
I will leave it.
Is there any? She's kind of not necessarily charged, but she can answer questions if anybody has them on the bus. If not, thank you. We're looking for public comment on the 2020 Transportation Coordination Plan for the city bus. If anybody out there has a pros or cons for or against it, that would be the time to voice your concerns over your positions. Okay, what we'll do is I'll recess, since I don't really see anybody else knocking doors down. About four, five minutes, little recess, and bring it back again, then open it back up, see if there's anybody else out there. So we'll recess for five minutes.
I would like to see if you want the council.
Transportation Plan for the city bus. Is there any pros or cons or or against it? Or just general statements on that? We had a couple new ones come through the door, did know, I have a feeling I know what you're here for, but it could be multiple reasons. Do you have a comment on the bus? Okay, we're still looking if there's any public comment for the city bus transportation coordination plan. Still looking, I'll take a second call for the lookings. Third and last call for any input on the 2020 Transportation Coordination Plan, city bus. There are nobody, I will close the public hearing. Okay, we'll start again in five minutes, we'll start the regular meeting. There was a 20-year summon track, I think. So there's 10 years. O'Dear?
O'Dear.
B.J. going. Or Mr. Close. Okay, well, use me, J.
Those two was Hector and Pupisai. That's the one you guys had.
Does anybody else stay out there?
You only get one. Tell you right buddy. Well, you got gas, you gotta get that.
It's like it's dirty, but it smells good. Never those days, you just take a nap. Exactly.
Okay, I'll start the regular meeting of the city council for February 5th, 2020 to order. Diane, would you lead us in the question?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item minutes, move to approve, second. It's been moved by Dan, sent by Russ, discussion. This is minutes for January 15th, 2020.
Calls and questions.
Questions being called for to approve to January 15th, 2020, meeting minutes of the city council. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. I take that as unanimous. Okay, next item is petitions communications. The first is the one I put in, actually I put both of them in, but we have some, we have some rules, procedures for the council that we passed last year. And what I want to do is, there's been some questions that came up on how does Robert Rules really work? Because there are some different, different versions of Robert's rules. So I was thinking, it probably is best, just so all of us don't get confused on how it really actually works. And after I went through this, I find out I'm not even really following it the full way. Because really, a call for question doesn't really mean much, it's a different, and you got to actually vote, even though I'm not doing the vote. I just, if somebody calls their question and I don't see any council person saying, no, 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 you know, then we start voting, really it's supposed to be to their, well, no, it's just a call for, it's not call for question, it is
Consideration of the
Consideration of the improper or of the question, grievance question, and then you would vote on that. And if that passes, then you go to the vote, I count the audience, you know. But what I was thinking of doing is I put this out, and I also was put it to judicial, and we're going to try to set it up in kind of like a, if a rule or procedure or policy, policies were looking for. A policy at the council to say, this is how we're going to run our meeting, our actual, we have rules that we follow on how to run it, but this will give us how Robert's rules of order, we're part of it. So we'll try to follow that as close as we can. Just like the boards. Hmm? Like the boards. Yep, and so we will get this, I will put this on the judicial committee's agenda, and then it'll bring back, and we'll have the council vote on it as a policy, so we'll all have the rules. This is only, that's why I put that petition communications for everybody to read it over or look it over. And anybody has an input, give it to the judicial, or if you're on the judicial, come do it. So, okay. Next one is, we finally, after a couple of years, got a community development block grant called CDVG. For 24, we asked for 30, and then we also, for the downtown District 1, state added on to it and asked for 12 or 14. They didn't get their part of it, you know, because we got ours, because of the explosive states, it's a capital improvement plan update. We originally asked for 30, we got 24, we have to match a third. So a third for the 24 would be eight, so we got to come up with eight grand. But that's still going to not make it enough, that's 32. So on the capital improvement plan, what I would be asking, and we'll put this on probably water sewer on that, because, and we'll try to take, if everybody agrees, we'll split it by thirds. A third of the matching fund to make 40 is, we'll take a third from general, a third from water, and a third from sewer. Because the capital improvement plan is supposed to look at all your infrastructure. And mainly, our three biggest parts is streets, that would be the general fund, water, you know, the water lines and the sewer lines, and all the other equipment related. That's why I say 333, or 333. But that will be, the funding part will be on the water and sewer, next meeting, next Tuesday. But then after that, it goes to the planning board and they run the show. They'll be calling out for requests for qualifications pretty quick to ask for engineers to put in, so then we can go through, go through the process, pick an engineering firm, and then the engineering firm will work with us to develop or revise, update our capital improvement plan and make it more current. That's the time when the public gets a chance to go through and put their input in, what do they consider? This is the time they would be able to consider what's the most important streets to everybody to be repaired first. That would be in the capital improvement plan. So just want to tell everybody, there's no vote on it, just, we're going to start the process for that.
Just a question, so the entire 32, once you add in our contribution, that'd be for water, sewer, and streets? Nothing for the city hall, is it?
For the city hall?
The city hall.
That is correct. Yeah, this is only to develop a document that states the position of the public and then the city also, city council, on where are you going to spend the money that we get, the water sewer, where are we going to fix up? What's our future plans for the next five years?
But the intent is that it would be split between us three and not the city hall?
No, no, it's, because it's not, it's not fixing anything. This is just developing a plan, what we're going to follow, on where the money's going to be spent, but it's not doing anything besides hiring an engineer and developing the document. Okay, next item is the mayor's report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I wonder if we, if the council would consider moving up from the reports of standing committees, number six, the parks committee report. We have people here this evening who have young children at home, and I wonder if we could move that up so that they could get home to their children.
So I'm taking that as a motion?
That's a motion.
Is there a second?
Oh, second.
So it's moving from six to where?
Right now.
Right now.
So it's been moved by Mary Jo, second by Raymond, is what I heard.
Discussion?
Think there is, I haven't looked at the Robert's rules, but I think there's discussion. Is there any discussion? This subject is only just moving it. Correct. Not approving it or any of that.
Before I discuss, I'd like to ask a question, how late reasonably can you stay?
As long as we need to.
As long as we need to.
Pardon me?
As long as we need to.
Okay. I had planned on discussing the parks committee minutes in detail, both the January 22nd and the January 30th meetings, when they were originally agenda. It would be I would, I would prefer that it stay as originally agenda rather than changing it.
Okay, any other discussion?
Is there any reason on what difference is making, still discuss the minutes?
Uh, just the order of how, in terms of the agenda, I wanted to approach discussion of the things. But if the council wants to agree to the change for whatever reason, then so be it, but I would prefer it as originally agenda.
Any other discussion?
The reason for the change, Mr. Mayor, or the request for the change, is simply to ease the burden of coming to discuss this matter with the council by the public.
Well, I think they've just expressed that it's not an unreasonable burden.
Any further discussion? Ready for the question? This is just on movement, the agenda. And I do think, since And I do think, since we're moving and we're changing the agenda, these two thirds, and so it needs, I think it's two thirds of the actual ones sitting, so I would say five, I think. My gut feel, she's in my air correct. Because there's seven here and so five would be two thirds. So we need, so we need five members to vote for it. Just so everybody's not going to be shocked if something happens. Okay, question, I heard the question called for, so all those in favor of moving the item under the reports of standing committees for parks number six back to right it, right before the mayor's report to the city council, or in, affirm, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Okay. Can we just say, I heard Rich and he's the only nay for the record? Would that be fine or do we all need to poll everybody?
That would be fine.
Okay. We'll make it record on that Rich was no or nay and the rest of them will say aye. So which is two thirds, so that is being moved. So the parks committee is, the reports and that is being moved to now. So parks committee, Ms. O'Rourke.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, council, I, for the perusal is the, the minutes of the January twenty-second Parks and Playground Committee meeting.
Move to approve. Second. Is that Matt to move?
No.
Dan, Russ, second. Okay.
Excuse me for, I don't want to get my voice hurt. I'm going to read from this, which I normally don't recommend, but I have some detail, but I really don't have an alternative. The January twenty-second, two thousand twenty minutes of the Parks Committee need to be amended in order to more accurately summarize the meeting, establish a record for subpoena of potential legal proceedings, and accurately establish the parliamentary carryover status of the Little League lease and any motions attached. My suggested amendments are as follows. Item two. First paragraph. After sentence ending in including in the packet, delete the rest of the paragraph and replace with, quote, during a discussion about financial aspects of the lease, the following was said. And I will abbreviate the party, the three parties to the Parks Committee with just initials. Mary Jo will be MJO. I will be RW and Bill Schaefer will be PS. No, no pun intended. Just the opposite. Proceeding. Mary Jo O'Rourke, quote, we're going to catch up, Rich. We're going to catch you up, okay. Myself, catch me up. Mary Jo O'Rourke, we're going to catch you up after the meeting. Rich Wassel, with what? Mary Jo O'Rourke, we've already had this discussion, so we'll catch you up on what costs are being saved by the contract. Rich Wassel will let me finish the lips. Later. Mary Jo O'Rourke, quote, I'm going to bring this discussion to an end. I'll entertain a motion to table this discussion till next time, end quote. Bill Schaefer, I've moved to table until next time until we can look at this packet. Rich Wassel, I second. The motion passed unanimously. The other amendment is to item two, the last paragraph. Replace that paragraph with the following. There was a request by the Little League to discuss what would be needed to complete the lease, at which point the following was said. Mary Jo O'Rourke, quote, we'll catch Rich up on what we've been doing over the last nine months, end quote. Rich Wassel, I'm aware of most of it, end quote. The Little League requested a special parks meet, meetings, excuse me, at noon on Monday, January thirtieth, two thousand twenty. Rich Wassel made the following motion. Rich Wassel, I move that we publish a special meeting at noon time on Monday for the committee to go over the lease and associated subjects. Bill Schaefer, seconded. The motion passed unanimously. These are the changes and amendments that I propose for the January twenty-second Parks Committee meeting.
Now, first off, I think what happened is we did not hold a meeting on, I mean, it was not stated in that meeting for the thirtieth, it was stated for the twenty-seventh, wasn't it? And then everybody, well, not everybody, we did not have a quorum.
You're, you're correct.
Mary Jo would make it.
You're correct, Mr. Mayor. It was a reason.
So we obviously did get from the recording.
You're correct.
If you put down thirtieth.
It was, it was for the twenty, uh, that month.
And then we had to cancel that because we didn't have a quorum for the meeting and so we went to the thirtieth, which everybody, well, to two of you, just Bill Schaefer's out, could make that meeting on the thirtieth and that's when we set it up. So that's how the thirtieth got evolved. Now, in my opinion, I don't believe what he wanted to put in was any different than what was said there. And we kind of have a policy here on minutes and we've been trained in our training classes that you really don't want to put verbatim on any of it because that'll take forever. So we try to summarize what was said and I really don't believe anything that was stated there was different than what was in the minutes already, besides being summarized.
Well, the point being, one, I, I believe, with all due respect, Mayor, it does more establish accurately the record. Secondly, insofar as the subject of open meetings and any legal proceedings, in that regard, the minutes are silent without this. And thirdly, the attempt of adding these two amendments is to show what was the status of the continued discussion of the Little League lease in the twenty-second meeting. And without this, I believe, that becomes less clear.
Okay, so you have your, want to put a motion on the table to approve your changes as you stated?
I've, I've read my amendment, amendments and I apologize for doing it word by word, but there's no real other way to do it. And so I would ask that I be allowed to move that the amendment, the, the minutes of the meeting to be so amended.
Is there a second? Second call for a second. Third and last call for a second to amend the minutes as stated. I hear, hearing no second, the motion fails.
Can I ask a question after this time? Uh, Rich, are you objecting to the fact that Mary Jo says she'll catch you up after the meeting, thus having a legal meeting? Is that your intent?
I'd prefer not to comment on that at this time because I'm waiting further opinions before I could make a reply to you.
And, well, I find it difficult to make a second when we want to have a meeting. We don't know what was said, so therefore for us to make a second to change something that he says was said versus what we know, it's hard for us to, to, to comment.
I agree with you.
That's what I've always said, that we have no business admitting somebody else's minutes.
Correct. I, I agree with you, however, I mean, I guess it comes down to a matter of trust. I, I've spent hours going over the audio recording of both this meeting and the meeting of the thirtieth. And I assure you that I got tired of going back and going back and going back over the same verbiage to make sure that I got everything correct. So whether or not these are incorporated into the minutes, which you just appreciate to do, the recording is out there and so I guess I'll have to rely on, on Mr. Hazelmaker, essentially the before picture of what the costs are, the continuing costs of running regular park as is before any changes of the rule. And I told you that I had reviewed that and I attempted to walk out of the room without any further discussion of it and you then told me that I should realize that the lease was going to be approved at the January twenty-seventh scheduled meeting and that I was going to vote for it. And I told you, I told you, I told you that that was dictatorial and then I left the room.
I'm sorry you think that, Mr. Wassel, I think you misheard me. I would never say that. I said, I hope we considered this at our next meeting and I hope it is approved. I did say that, yeah, but.
Well, I believe there were witnesses in that room, so.
Great. Great.
Call for a question. Well, I think questions being called for on the minutes. So we'll vote on approving the January twenty-second meeting minutes as approved as stated in the document. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
This one I will go over. We'll start Mary Jo.
Aye.
Rich.
Nay.
Raymond.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
Want to make sure the position for a change. Matt?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
Okay, six ayes, one nay. The minutes have been approved. Now we're looking for approval of the January thirtieth meeting minutes, special meeting.
Move to approve the special meeting, January thirtieth.
Second. Okay, was Russ making the motion? Matt seconded, discussion.
Mr. Mayor, I, some discussion of it and potential amendments. I also listened to the recording of this meeting. Keep in mind that the recording was of the initial meeting, which was quickly suspended by the chairwoman after a parliamentary dispute between the two of us. And keep in mind, we had a short quorum because the councilperson Schaefer was absent, so there's just the two of us. And she maintained that nothing could be done as far as the discussion of the Little League contract without a motion on the floor to approve it. And because of the clear language, which I just read to you from a, from a review of the audio recording of the twenty-second meeting, it was clear that, A, there was not a motion on the floor and B, that twice in that meeting, it was expressed by motion that the further consideration of the contracts and then, secondly, in the twenty-seventh meeting, was going to be on a discussion basis as far as the continuing review of the contract. And so with that, these minutes, I don't believe, are correct in that they do not reflect at all what the recess was for, how it was handled and what was basically decided in that recess and how councilperson O'Rourke, for, if I use a better term, in discussing it by speakerphone with myself and city attorney Snobert, if she indicated that the, it had to have a motion on the floor in order to discuss it because it was basically at that stage from the previous meeting, it was not. It was at the stage of continued discussion and that was exactly part of the motions that were made in that meeting. So first of all, these minutes are effective in terms of what was, why that recess was called, what was discussed during that recess and how and whom and the set. Also, the minutes are insufficient in that I came under personal attack during this meeting. Initially, by interruption and attack by the representative of the Dillon Trudon and later by a member of the staff of the city. To be quite honest, I at many times during the discussion of this contract with the Little League have been more than transparent that I have a bias towards the Little League. I do not wish to be cast into the Grinch that killed the Little League project. That's not my intent. But as I, as was mentioned in these minutes, I did indicate that despite of my bias towards the Little League, I don't represent their interest and I try to do a good job of representing the city's interest. I've been here a couple of months. I don't need to be caught up. I'm, I guess it's just a part of this job that you have to get used to being a target. But I've been here two months, rocks a little bit over, and this is getting old real quick. There's not a whole bunch of guys lined up behind me to do this job and my seats had a lot of tail ends besides mine in it in the last couple of years. So I'd ask that first of all, these minutes be amended while, let me make a motion. So I'd ask that first of all, these minutes be amended while, let me make a motion. I ask that these amendment, these, excuse me, minutes be tabled until such time that city staff can more thoroughly listen to the tape and more completely express what was said and specifically regards to the recess, how that occurred. Though it was off tape, what the general subject, as much as you can say, was handled off tape. And then that I did come under a personal attack, both by the Dillon Trudon in an interruption of my attempting to discuss these subjects at the meeting, and I also came under personal attack by his happening. And I ask that those, that that motion be seconded.
Now, before I'm going to accept a second or even ask for one, instead of saying in your motion that you'll have our staff to go look through that, she's done that already. Now, make a motion if you would, so I'm asking you to rephrase your motion.
Well, I'll attempt to, but I thought I made it clear.
My motion was to go through and make us re-listen to the whole meeting again and fix the errors, which you have not stated yet to me where the errors are.
The errors are...
That you want us to fix.
The only, the only mention of the recess was Mary Jo asked to call a brief recess. The recording was turned off. There's no mention of why the recess was called, who was going to be, how the recess was going to be conducted, i.e. by an attempted cellphone, speakerphone call with the city attorney and what the purpose of the recess was. I think I've been very clear.
So you have arguments you like in this thing?
No, it's, it's just totally missing, Mr. Mayor, and I'm asking through the motion that the city staff be entrusted with this being tabled, they being able to more completely listen to the recording and attempt to completely summarize what, what is on that recording and, and specifically with what's not on that recording. The recess, more completely listen to the recording and attempt to describe why the recess was called, what the subject was going to be and what, how it was going to be conducted.
Can we clear this up real quick? Can you ask Mary Jo why she called the reset?
Sure.
In a minute.
Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the question, Raymond. I, I called for the recess because we needed a second in order to, there were just two of us there because Bill was out, and I made the motion to approve the lease as presented and I needed a second so that we could proceed. Rich was not forthcoming with that second and I could see that he, he was not going to come forth with that second, and so I recessed so that we could get, we could clear that question up. Mr. Hazel Baker, very rightly, went out of the room and Mr. Dolan was homesick and interrupted his sick day to, so that we might ask that question. Would it be proper procedure to, for you to give a second and then we will proceed with the discussion? Mr. Dolan answered that question and then we went back to the meeting. Is that, am I characterizing it correctly?
Well, other than I was quite groggy with cold medication. That's, that's reasonable, yeah. Would that be an acceptable motion to replace that? Because here's the kicker, it's going to be this, I don't want to put my staff down every time somebody wants and we're going to go out and perbatim make every meeting perbatim. That's not going to happen.
Nor is that my intent, Mr. Mayor, but I came under personal attack in this meeting. I'd like that memorialized. Secondly, I'd like it memorialized as to why the recess was called and what was attempted in terms of the discussion the city attorney told, as I mentioned. Looking through the minutes of the prior meeting on the 22nd, it's clear that anybody that wishes to listen to that recording, as I understand it, is public information and anyone can listen to. My, my detail, word by word, is correct. And those minutes, there was no, no motion on the floor to approve the Little League contract. It was at a discussion stage and both of the motions relative to proceeding with the contract were to postpone discussion and table. How that converts to then a meeting on the 22nd, excuse me, 27th, and then the chairperson opening that meeting with a edict that nothing will proceed without a motion to approve the Little League contract, without any further discussion, which was, which is where it was at.
Mr. Mayor, this was, the 30th was a special parks committee meeting and as such, as a special meeting, there was one item on the agenda, with the exception of our usual ending, you know, for public comment, but there was one item and it was review and approval of the lease agreement with Beaverhead Little League Association. Mr. Wassel, you're making us far more sexy. The Parks Committee, I never thought we would be this, boy, newsworthy. And I appreciate that.
I never did that.
And I appreciate it. I wanted to kind of, I was hoping that we could just, it was, it was a question about whether we needed a second and we're making far too big of a, of an issue out of, it was just a question. We needed a second, Mr. Dolan cleared that up, you seconded.
We did not.
We went ahead.
We needed a second. There was no motion on...
I made the motion.
Yes, but you did not need to do that because it was in a discussion. It had been postponed and tabled from a previous meeting.
Oh, here's, let me interrupt. Three minutes. Phil Schaefer made the motion to table and that passed through. Now, it was brought up though, after, after some further discussion. I tell you without you guys actually making a motion that you reconsidered your vote to table, which is allowed to do.
Pardon me?
That you made a reconsideration of your tabling. So you brought it back and you, even though you said you made a motion to hold the special parks meeting for review of the lease for the 27th. What that really turns into me is the motion to table to a date certain and that date certain was January 27th. So you're just going to have a meeting to discuss review of the lease.
Yes.
And so when you get to that meeting, you allow, you've hit that time certain, that date certain that you set. And now when you come back, you need from our rules, you do need a motion to start the discussion. You're not really supposed to, by our rules that we've set, go into 50-minute discussion without a motion, because that might just be a bunch of waste of time if you can't even get a second, then there is no, there is no discussion. You, you've got to make a motion. Most of the time it's got to be positive, like I said in my handout, it's got to be a positive motion.
Okay.
And then you have a second. If you don't get the second, then that motion fails and there is no more further discussion and the meeting's over.
I don't, I don't believe that's an accurate representation for these reasons, Mr. Mayor. There was a motion, which I read word by word, which tabled discussion until next time.
And it stayed until the date certain.
Then there was another related motion in terms of the request for the special meeting and I will read you word by word because I made the motion. I move that we publish a special meeting at noon time on Monday for the committee to go over the lease and associated subjects. It does not a motion to approve the lease or anything of this sort.
And you don't need a motion to approve the lease to table it. You just tabled the motion, which is what happened, and then you bring it back at date certain, which you just set with that 27th. So now on the, well, it didn't happen on 27th, so the 30th, you come back and somebody makes a motion because it's a whole fresh meeting. The meetings that happened before is over. You made a motion to table to date certain. On that date then, you come back on that date that you made and somebody has to make a motion again. Motions do not follow across, you know, because you adjourned to meeting on the 22nd, it was adjourned. It wasn't recessed, it was adjourned. And once you adjourn, no more motions fall, it's over. So you've got to start a whole new meeting, make a motion, a second has to happen, then you get into discussion. And you also got to look at the agenda. The agenda on that said, on the 30th, was discuss review recommendation of lease MOU with Little League Association. That opens it pretty much to the floor if somebody wants to make a motion to accept it.
Yes, someone wants to, but...
If somebody wants to, yes.
It doesn't, in my mind, still, it doesn't make it so that it removes everything that went on beforehand in terms of where it was left as far as discussion and making it only the option that, that it has to have a motion on the floor in order to move at all, in order to do anything.
You do. To do anything, this council as committees only do, their only action only can be done by a motion.
Let me try to end this.
Okay.
It will be a cold day before I ever attempt to again make a substantive change in minutes. So I'm not going to beat this dead horse, honey, further. I withdraw my attempt at making a motion and let's proceed.
Okay.
Couple of questions.
And you have a discussion in it before us. It's what?
The motion on the table is to approve the minutes as presented.
Okay. Question's been called for to approve the January 30th, 2020 special meeting minutes of the Parks Committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Mr. Mayor, I place before you and the council...
No, no, we had a vote.
We have a vote.
Don.
Aye.
Matt.
Aye.
Russ.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
Raymond.
Aye.
Rich.
Nay.
Mary Jo.
Aye.
Okay, we've got seven ayes, one nay. So the motion to approve the minutes succeeds, it passes.
Mr. Mayor, you mean six, don't you?
So I said, didn't I?
I said seven.
Oh, six, I meant six, but I said six, but if I didn't, I meant six, if I didn't say it. Okay, so now we're on time, aye.
Mr. Mayor and council, I place before you approval of the Ray Lenz Park lease agreement with the Beaverhead Little League. And here we have representatives from Beaverhead Little League, which will go over the, the agreement and the project.
Move to approve, second. It moved again, said by Russ, discussion.
I have a...
If you want to begin or should we have them get up first and then...
Whichever you prefer.
Go ahead.
Okay, Russ, or Rich, I mean.
We concluded our meeting on the 30th by my saying that I have some other questions, but I didn't want to delay the process, so I went ahead and voted to approve moving to this body. I have a couple of areas of concern. Keep in mind, I don't want to see this thing fail and I don't want to be cast in the role of the Grinch that killed the Little League. I think your project is extremely beneficial to our community. I wish you well. I hope you don't have any bumps in the road, though I'm sure you will. I hope you obtain without a great deal of effort, community support and funding behind your budget. And with that said, I've been around contracts most of my professional life. I've seen them misdesigned from the get-go. I've seen them succeed and I've seen them fail. In my mind, for whatever reason, six months ago, nine months ago, whichever it was, or anything in between, that this, this exercise started, I believe the genesis of it was, okay, we've got a vision of doing this project and in discussing with the city, how do we move forward? Well, if, get a contract together, need to get a lease agreement together. And somehow, some way, the Dillon Cubs' existing lease agreement became a template for creating this agreement. I think that was a fatal flaw. Well, not fatal, potentially fatal, but hopefully not. But I think it was a flaw because it would have been better off to have your attorney or the city attorney start off the process of trying to put the pets together and come up with a lease agreement that covered all of the subjects, all of the terms, and was acceptable to both attorneys and both parties. We're kind of in a situation here where I'm in a box. I want to approve this thing. I want this vote to approve your agreement to be unanimous. But I also don't want to see this thing fail as far as the city's interest in terms of this lease agreement. So I've got the following questions for you. Section 12 of the revised lease agreement as a result of the January 30th meeting act. Section 12 deals with insurance. Would you have any problem with the following change to the language? Where it says the first sentence and ends with city named as an additional insured, could we continue that on with the following language? With an insurance company acceptable to city covering all insurable risks assumed by Beaverhead Little League, Inc., under the terms of this lease agreement? My intent there is to tighten it up because I don't know what kind of insurance situation you're going to face in terms of going out and getting this to move forward. However, as far as the city's concerned, I don't want it to become a situation where then we have to go back to the dispute provision. If you bring forward an insurance policy from an offshore insurance company, XYZ... If you bring forward an insurance policy from an offshore insurance company, XYZ, or the Bahamas, or whatever, that's basically a shell apparatus. And these things exist in the insurance industry in order to take care of surplus situations, which I'm not sure if yours is going to fall into.
I'm pretty familiar with the insurance world. I've been there for 14 years. So in that paragraph, are you suggesting that we go with certain carriers that are not surplus lines and have certain A and best ratings? Or is there something specific in there that you...
Well, I'd be interested in your opinion, but I thought rather than tying it down to an A and best rating of A plus, double A, whatever, because they change eventually. It would be more preferable, in my mind, to set it up so that we just leave it loose and you're on record that since this is a provision of the contract, that the city's not just going to file this thing away in the file cabinet and not pay attention on a yearly basis to whoever the insurance is through.
And I believe that, and you can quote me if I'm wrong here, the MMIA program that you guys are currently insured upon your property and casualty insurance requires a copy of the certificate to be on file, and they have to review that, especially since they're a self-funded trust. So I believe that every certificate of insurance that you get where you're listed as an additional insured is reviewed by the MMIA. So in the case that our insurance isn't acceptable, we would probably get notified by them. Because even though you'd be an additional insured, that doesn't release the city from any liability because you own the property. It's a protection, but it doesn't release you from liability. So the MMIA will review every single one of those certificates.
So they would review it as far as the reliable term, financial stability and health of the insurer?
I do not know. I don't know what they use for criteria when they review to find acceptable or not. So I can't answer that.
I know they do review it, so I think they probably would, but you don't if it wasn't acceptable.
I do know that our...
But I can't, yeah, as far as their internal criteria, I don't have that.
I don't have it either, so...
Our current coverage is through the larger umbrella of the Little League Association, Little League International through AIG. So it's a, it's a great carrier, it's through Little League International. As far as the property insurance goes, all of that would be, it's not surplus lines. It would not be a surplus lines policy.
So how do you want to proceed? Would you be agreeable to adding this language, or do you want to refer us back to our relationship with MMIA?
What was, can you repeat the language that you were wanting to add?
Could we check with the city attorney and ask if this is, if this is an addition that he approves of and...
Well, first, let's hear the language again, so we can write it down, then we'll have the city attorney...
Sure. Okay, in section 12 of the revised lease as of after the January 30th meeting, it says, the first sentence ends with city named as an additional insured, and my suggestion is that after that, that sentence be continued as follows. With an insurance company acceptable to city covering all insurable risks assumed by Beaverhead Little League, Inc., under the terms of this lease agreement. And I'm trying to be fair in asking this, and I purposely inserted the word covering, the word insurable risk, because if you do have any risks which are uninsurable in this lease, then I don't wish to put you in a position of impossibility performance as far as coming up with insurance.
Does Jim hear or understand what was said? Do you have a problem with that being said?
No, I don't. We simply add what's there anyway. It's just possession, use and operation of said property, including little league activities.
Okay.
Can I ask a question, Jim?
Yes.
If we choose to put this into this contract with this entity, is it a precedent, and does this type of language need to go into everything, such as the contract I've got to sign for a mobile vendor, which states that I have to have insurance and I have to share it with the city and blah, 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 and any and everything else?
I doubt there are any precedent, and I don't, I don't think that's necessary. It's a situational thing.
Okay.
I think it just depends on what the scope of the risk is.
Okay.
So here, you've got kids playing baseball against kids and poker cards and all kinds of things. I'm not saying that happens.
Right, right, right.
Vending food is a little different.
Sure.
You know, the zone of the risk is different, I think. So it may not be the language you want to use per se.
Would that be acceptable?
I don't see a problem with it.
Okay, then...
Can you move to how that amended?
Do I need the section move this, or, I have three items, so...
Let's just do one at a time.
One at a time, okay.
So make a motion.
I, I so moved that that language be added to section 12 of the Little League lease with the city.
Is there a second?
Second.
And second by, or made motion by Rich? Second by Russ. Any further discussion on it? Okay, I'm taking it, there's a call for a question.
Yep.
All those in favor of adding that, I'm not going to restate it, just I didn't finish writing everything. But adding those, that line at the end of additional insured on item 12, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I take that one as unanimous. So that's been added.
This, I've got three items, and this is the least of the three. I'm sure you're aware of the news of what the latest targets of the trial lawyers are in terms of finding deep pockets. You mentioned you were in the insurance business, so it's Roundup and other agrochemicals. And though I doubt that you would ever intentionally do anything to trigger this, I would like to see the city protected through section seven. There we go. Use of property. It goes into some detail, referring to the middle of this. Shall not dispose of any oil or petroleum products, hazardous waste, chemical or controlled substances in or upon said property. Since the current big target is Roundup and other glyphosate, which as I understand, if Bayer Monsanto is basically put out of the business of producing these chemicals, there's plenty of Chinese manufacturers that will import into, or do import into, the country, competing products, and that they will continue to be available. So would you be opposed to some sort of continuation of that verbiage to include specific mention of Roundup or like, let me remember mispronouncing it, spell it, G-L-Y-P-H-O-S-A-T-E-S?
So Mr. Wassell, are you wanting to know if they will include some verbiage which says they will dispose of Roundup?
Well, section seven, use of property, attempts to basically say they're not going to do anything to damage the property. I'd like to have language in there that specifically mentions Roundup and glyphosate that they will not be used on the property.
Well, and I, as I'm reading through here, I believe it's somewhat captured without being specific to Roundup, where it says that towards the bottom, Beaverhead Little League shall not perform, allow, or permit any conduct or activity on the said property which is contrary to the laws, rules, regulations of any governmental agency or entity, or which may be a hazard to or damage to persons on the said property or any adjoining property.
Oh, where are you reading from again?
It's the second to the last paragraph or sentence in section seven.
Yes.
So the last part of that is...
Put the last Beaverhead Little League, Inc.
Yeah, right.
Right, well...
So it says, which may be a hazard to or damage to persons on the said property or any adjoining property, which would be all encompassing. So even if something is still approved on the market, if it's a hazard, we're held liable right there by stating in this lease that we will not conduct any activity that is a hazard to or damage to persons on the said property or adjoining.
But in your opinion, does that really protect us? Because as a governmental entity, we're not in the business of passing a law, rule or regulation which would affect legitimate use of that product. We can, we can do it, I believe, specifically with this contract because of the risk associated with kids, the dirt, et cetera, et cetera, and that coming back if Murphy shows up and somebody does something stupid, and then you get ex sued and the city get ex sued, then we'd be unable to, at least be able to have your whole harmless, that you've assured us that this won't happen.
First off, this has nothing to do with city's laws. This is, just when you see it on laws, it's federal, state, county, city. All the rules go in front of that.
The way I understand this language to read is that any conduct or activity that is contrary to laws, rules, regulations of agencies or entities, or which may be a hazard to individuals, persons on said property or adjoining. So it's, if it's not, even if it's allowed by law, if it's still a hazard in that section, we, we will not be doing that. And if we do, we're signing this contract that says we won't. That's the way I understand it.
I would ask Attorney Dolan, that's pretty loose, may be a hazard to or damage to persons on said property or any adjoining property. By whose determination? And that could get pretty murky, couldn't it?
Well, I would say that considering the issue of Roundup, I went to Nick Gutcher, you know, and I asked him, and I said, have you, do you use Roundup? You ever use Roundup on the parks? He said, absolutely not. No, I don't use Roundup. I would not use Roundup. And I don't mix my ears, so I don't really want to speak for him, but that was the substance of my conversation, you know? Now, that sentence says, it's contrary to the laws, rules, regulations of any governmental agency. So to use Roundup, in my view, would be contrary to the regulations of the State Parks Department. As he says, I don't use it. I understand the concern. If, if, if you're specific about Roundup, what's the next, what's the next target from the tort lawyers? Is it going to be some other, some other substance?
I have no idea, but I know that is the target right now.
I agree with you.
And with that knowledge, I'd like to make sure that the target isn't on our chest.
That's fair enough.
Correct me if I'm wrong, if, if Roundup, Monsanto, wherever it is, does something illegal, these guys buy it and they use it according to label direction, they are not held responsible, so long as they do not deviate from what the label directions and EPA ruling says you can use it here, so long as they do everything they say they can do it for, and it's a listed legal product, the city or these guys can't be held liable. If they in turn come in and say, do not use Roundup anywhere ever again, and you come in and use it, then you're liable. As long as you are doing everything that's on the label, you buy a label, a jug of any kind of chemical, there's a label sometimes 15 pages long, as long as you do everything that label says, you're not held liable for anything. If you come in and you do something silly with it, then you're liable.
That's, that's probably the way it should be, but correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Dolan, in the San Francisco case, which was the largest award, I believe, to date with Roundup, the city was named as a party to that lawsuit in addition to Bayer and Monsanto.
Well, they've got deep pockets, I mean, I'm not going to sit here and guarantee that the city's not going to have exposure from that. I don't know anybody, I don't know any lawyer that would be fool enough to do that.
If something comes up and someone's going to file a suit, whether there's negligence or not, they're still going to file a suit. You're still going to get sued, whether, even if it's in this contract, to specifically use Roundup or not use Roundup. They're going to name the city.
But at least...
Automatically.
If we've got it in here that you, and I'm not saying you can do this, it would, it would be extremely irresponsible and stupid of someone to do it out there on that field. But if Murphy shows up and somebody does do something stupid under your auspices, then let's protect the city.
Well, I...
So that at least, at least we've got this in the contract, which if we are sued, we can say, well, you know, we certainly did our due diligence on trying to make sure that that didn't happen.
Okay, let's, we've been spending tons of time on this stuff here. Let's just add a line if you guys don't disagree, okay? At the end of, that's an adjoining property which includes Roundup or any associated product, or some wording like that.
I'm fine with that, let's move on.
You know, that's such a broad thing. If someone goes out there and uses a weed spray to kill a dandelion in the neighbor next door, that's going to open the city up for a legal challenge. Could we say you shouldn't have done that? I think, I think we're best, I basically think we're best leave this to federal regulation. All these chemicals we're worried about is regulated already to death. You know, most people, and I, I don't like, for instance, these guys cannot spray on that field without going and getting a license to do it. They have to be a licensed applicator to spray on ground they don't own. So it's not like these guys are going to do anything anyway. If they want anything sprayed, they're going to have to go to a commercial sprayer who in theory has went to school, who knows what they're doing, is covered by liability services they own, so they're the target, they can sue what they want. And I think we're wasting a lot of time on something that, that the federal government, if you don't like them or whatever you want to say about them, they've got rules and regulations against all this stuff. You can't do this, you can't do this. Roundup may or may not be actually, for all the hype Roundup's getting, has been ruled that it's made possible. It hasn't even been proved to cause anything that they said Roundup has done. It's just the World Health Organization said that's a possible cause of citizenship, and we need to study more. The juries took to that and said, oh, they're a good company, let's sue them, let's give them zillions of dollars. It may or may not be...
I don't, I don't dispute anything that you said.
Let's make a motion.
If your, if your position...
Let's make a motion, put it on the table, get a second, let's go in a little further. We don't even have a motion for it.
Okay, may I make one?
Make a motion, please.
And then make a motion. If, if this happened, that somebody did apply it to those grounds, and then somebody...
Point of border, is this...
A motion to be made, please. You're not making a motion. You're still discussing.
May I ask a question?
No, make a motion, then ask a question.
Okay. I'm being shut down still.
No, you're not. Make a motion, get a second, then ask your question.
I'm asking you later a question.
And I am telling you as leader of this group, make a motion. If you don't make a motion, go to number three. That's what I'm saying, okay? Otherwise, let's just make a motion. Make a motion on how you want it said. We'll go with a second. I'm not shutting you down.
I'm trying to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, but she's going to be able to accept.
Make a motion, she will have input. This is how we run the way this works. You're not listening, Rich. I'm not shutting you down, we're following the rules. Make your motion. motion on how you want it said, please.
I'm not sure without asking her, but I'll do my best.
We can always amend it.
I make a motion that item seven of the lease agreement be amended as follows. Give me one moment, please. After the sentence in the middle of the section, Beaverhead Little League Inc. shall not dispose of any oil or petroleum products hazardous waste, chemical or controlled substances in or upon said property, comma, instead of period, said substances to include the chemical Roundup and any other GLYPHOSATES, period.
How about, can we say product named Roundup? Because chemical, Roundup's not a chemical.
It's like glyphosate.
So say product...
It's a chemical product, you're correct.
Product named Roundup or any containing a chemical, and what was the chemical name?
Or any other glyphosate products, period.
Do I have a second? Second call for a second. Third and last call for a second. Okay, that motion fails for due of the second, due lack of the second.
My third and last subject for discussion on the proposed lease agreement has to do with Section 20, default, and Section 5, dispute resolution. And again, I would like him to... Worst-case scenario.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I'm waiting for you. Well, let's let him ask one question, then we'll have him make a motion and get input from her or him, whoever. So ask your question.
Worst-case scenario. If, if things change, if the leadership of your organization changes and takes a different direction, or you get halfway into the project, earth is moved, ditches are dug, all the existing vegetation disappears, and we get raw dirt. But essentially, I'm driving at, if you've got a project which is half-built and your organization either is unwilling or unable to finish the project and complete it, there really isn't a motion to be made. I just wanted to make clear to the council that Section 20 and Section 5, as it currently exists, and I would welcome any solutions that other council members may have. But those are what will control what happens then in the case of the worst-case scenario. And what happens in my mind is that the city will inevitably end up with a half-complete project. They will not have a bond posted or any other financial consideration to look to in order to complete that project, and it will then be up to the city to go find means or organization in order to finish that work or otherwise reach the hard decision of leaving it as-is. That would be a very bad day. I don't think you have a solution to that. I don't have a solution to it. I just wanted to make clear to the council that without a bond or any other front-end loading of consideration by Little League to the city, that while in case this breaks in half, you get more than the guarantee that you get to keep both halves, we really don't have anything in that lease protecting the city. So that's exactly what will happen, is that we'll end up holding both hands.
As far as the property that exists at Ray Lynch right now, anything we do, even half-completed, is going to be a drastic improvement, drastic improvement. And that's my opinion. And we're taking on a lot of risk in this as well because we are fronting, not fronting, but we are investing a lot of our money, the money of our lead, potential donors, future donors, into building this complex on city ground. And the lease states that if something happens to our lead at that point, we walk away with nothing. We have no financial interest in that other than continuing operation for the kids. So there's more risk for us than there is for the city, way more risk, for us to build something with a potential of having to walk away. But we're still willing to take that risk. It's the right thing to do for the kids. The only other option is to build it on private property in which we have all of the risk. That's the only other choice. If, it's not a matter of if leadership changes, it's a matter of when, because it will. I could get hit by the bus tomorrow. I hope that they would continue, and we're trying to set up our board in a way that it will continue, and in the hopes that we get enough donations, that we even have an endowment that would continue the upkeep and the needs of that park way beyond what it's getting right now.
Well, I wish you well. And unless anyone else has discussion with Mr. Mayor, I'd call for a question.
I have questions.
Okay. Would you ever want to...
Okay. I agree 100% with something you just said. Anything you do is going to be an improvement. I, for one, do use Ray Lynch Park. I play in Coed softball league. I don't really know if it actually says it. Paragraph five talks about under operation, that a designated representative or committee to discuss and develop an operating plan for the coming year. And then item number seven, use of property, the very first sentence says said property shall be used by Beaverhead Little League as a sports complex and family facility to be utilized by the community members of Dillon, Montana, and it stops there. I guess my question is, is the Little League the only thing that's going to get used in, or are some of these other things, entities, are they going to have access to that park?
When we first drafted up the lease, and my phone died, so I can't see it, but there's a section in there about subletting it. And we specifically asked for language because we would have to get approval to sublet, with the exception of the adult Dillon ASA, which is the Coed Women's and Men's League. So...
Section 14.
So I just didn't get through.
No, that's okay, because that was very important when we were doing this lease, because we didn't want to take over exclusive use. We wanted the adults to continue to use it as well, because a lot of our parents also play that have kids. And those two lower fields on that diagram are the existing Ray Lynch fields. And if you look at the third field that we're hoping to add, it's much smaller, because the Little League doesn't need that big of regulation field that the adult league does. So we are leaving that field as-is and during our games or practices during our season, which is usually over before the adults start, we will use temporary fencing. And so that, our hope is to continue to work with the adult league closely, and we would all benefit from the nicer fields.
Perfect.
Yep.
Does it owe you that?
That is all I have.
Okay. Mr. Dolan, I have a question for you, please.
Okay.
On item number five, the last sentence that starts with Beaverhead Little League Incorporated, that's standard language, anti-discrimination language, isn't it?
That's correct.
Okay, so I don't know nothing with that.
No.
I do have one question for you. Are you registered with the state as a corporation?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have one for a question.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Okay, Russ. Clarical, please. Page one, term two. You have nine. You need to spell it out both times.
Where are you at?
On page one, section two, term. Term is nine. You need to spell that out consistent with this lease agreement throughout the document.
Oh.
And as we continue with that, we're going to skip to section 12. The dollar values need to be spelled out as well, please.
That's all. Thank you.
I guess I do one other question too, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Attachment A is going to be what? That right there?
Okay.
We just got to get a small copy to attach to it, and that would be given to you, to us, for you, from your engineer printing on it small.
You should have it. It prints on an 11 by 17 or smaller. It just makes it really small.
Do you have one?
Okay, we got one. Never mind. It'll be just a smaller version of that with, I think the Parks Committee agreed on the bottom left, it used to have a number down there saying it was part of parking. Down in the bottom left, you see kind of a little box that's wiped it out now, right there. It used to say eight. Now that's been removed because it's not parking for anybody to use. It's more city use only.
Okay. So that has been wiped out?
Yes, it's wiped. You don't see an eight there, do you, now?
No.
Who still had whiteout?
I brought some more just in case. I know what you did. It does not.
So that's really, that's what detachment's going to be?
I use a lot of whiteout.
I do too.
Is there any other questions? Any public comment?
I just want to say thank you for taking the time to at least entertain this idea over the last several months that we've been working on this. We're all really excited about this project and for what it means for not only the kids, but for the community as well, because we think this is going to be a pretty, a pretty awesome entrance off of Highway 41 as you come into Dillon. You know, we're hoping to do a lot of different things, including a nice big flagpole, and just some nice grass, some nice fields, and a lot of kids out there having a lot of fun. So we really appreciate your time and your willingness to look at this with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a question?
Call for a question.
Question that you called for, draft the whole thing here. To approve the Ray Lynch Park lease agreement with Dillon or Beaverhead Little League, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. As amended, as amended.
I was going to say, we agreed. We just passed the original agreement without the amendments.
No, we went, it went through amendments, and I just didn't state it. And so I stated it before the nay vote happened.
And there were, there were two amendments.
I got one.
One?
One.
Didn't we amend it with the glyphosate?
No.
We did.
No, that failed. So we got one about the insurance, and that's in.
And Russ's changes there.
Well, then Russ's changes of that stuff, yes. Okay, so I take it as unanimous.
Thank you.
We'll get it together to some, okay? Okay, back to the beginning almost. Mayor's report. First item, reappoint Jackie Earful to the zoning board as a citizen member.
Move to approve, second.
It's been moved by Don, seconded by Matt, was it?
Yes.
Okay. Discussion.
Call for a question.
Questions being called for to approve the reappointment of Jackie Earful to the zoning board as citizen member. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. I take that as unanimous. Next one is appointing, I created a couple of months ago, an Ad hoc Community Affairs Committee. We had a meeting today, but I'm also wanting to officially put Raymond Graham and Stacy Rambly also on that committee.
Move to approve, second.
Okay, I'll let you guys do it, even though Ad Hoc is just more stating it. It was...
Question on that, Mr. Mayor. That puts three councils on there. Does that constitute a quorum of any committees of the council?
It doesn't do of a council, but of a committee, I don't believe, like City Hall, I don't think.
Fire an order.
Yeah, but fire an order doesn't have anything really to do...
That's the only one.
...with the community affairs. If it is, we'll back off. If something comes up that has to do with fire an order, one of them will have to back off. Otherwise, it would be a quorum.
It's going to say we want a quorum, unintentionally appearing.
I agree.
Of course. It's been posted, and it's just following all the city rules as far as posting in 48 hours' notice. That's fine, but then you have unofficial meeting, you have committee, council with powers. It's less than what I'm aware of.
So I just wanted to tell you guys that I appointed those two also.
I don't object to you getting on the ring. Don't worry about it. You just don't, you just don't hold me in. You can object.
Next one's approve the law enforcement liaison job description. I spaced out last meeting. I supposed to have it on there. So I think I qualified Randy already, so it's cheap to do. Both, Russ?
Russ.
Russ made a motion. Dan, seconded as discussion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I just had two very small items to add, or at least for to be considered adding to the essential duties and responsibilities. And they would just come after, I think A is just excellent, but then inserted after A would be one that would say, it would be skilled, and I'll read it, skilled at navigating multiple computer applications with dexterity. And under that skill level, A would be proficient and comfortable with all MS office programs, i.e. Word, Excel, Outlook, PowerPoint, and OneNote.
Can you have those programs?
That's under the required...
Do you have any of those programs?
Yeah, I don't know how to use it. It was all...
That's why we have ring.
In talking with...
Well, that's under the required education and or experience, section C or part C, whatever you want to call it, and E, that's in there, is what's employed, you know, working knowledge of computers and modern office practices, even the typing desk, possible personal computer. I mean, we can add their MS products.
Right. At the professional level, if, when you put those things in for a professional level job, it's like saying you know how to use a mobile phone. So it's absolutely unnecessary. But this job is a non-professional level, and so according to the, there are a couple of books that are the handbooks of how to write job descriptions and how to make sure that you're getting the best possible people for the job. It would say that you need to spell out what programs you would expect. And just looking at the kind of reports that you've turned in, you need to... If they're proficient here, they're going to be proficient with kind of the second tier, which is what you need.
Mercy under that, just put under, it says modern office practices, put in modern office, including MS office projects, or including skills in MS office products. Mr. Mayor. We must hire ourselves with one manufacturer of products. Build the Linux system, that doesn't apply, for example.
I could see from the reports that he's given us, those are the products that they are using. They use Excel.
That's true, but should the system on the state level change to a different security system, those products might be affected in longer.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask the chief a question?
Yes. Chief?
Chief, I have a question for you.
Yeah, go ahead.
As I understand it, this document is intended to be the job description for this position, both currently and for the future, correct?
Yeah, I think what we did is we're doing just what Mary Jo's kind of, that was her intent, just to modernize it more a little bit. And with the, with the employee that I have now, it's a lot easier to do because she is so proficient in all these things. So I actually had her sit down and write this out, saying what she knows, what she feels is comfortable and what's, what's necessary there too. So we sat down there and kind of did this together. We even came up with the same stuff, but we didn't want to pigeonhole ourselves into certain programs because they're just ever-changing. And she even made that, she even made that, had that concern as well. And just to clarify a little too, when those reports come to you like that simple deal, that's me, that has nothing to do with her. Because it's making her look like she doesn't know what she's doing. I don't know what I'm doing, but she knows.
So would it be, would it be fair to say that you're preparing this, developing it, and the interests of the city were to take care of this issue right now with this person, but also have this document on file that this person leaves that position, you've got a new person, you need to recruit, blah, 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 without having to continually look at this document as far as redoing it?
Well, what I, what I would say is yes. And the reason that we did that is because we're updating all of them right now. You know, the mayor's asked us in the last year, just to make sure that all of our stuff is updated, so that we don't run into that problem. So this is basically a small insurance policy to make sure that we don't have to reinvent the wheel when it does come around. So I think you, I think you and I are probably on the same page as, because what needs to happen, maybe a little different opinion on what they are.
Well, I would echo President Hand's comments, putting together handbook descriptions. You don't want to get too detailed into the weeds, especially nowadays in tech and everything, where you're basically tying the description to something that's going to become obsolete and then you're just going to have to redo it.
Yeah, and I think some of that stuff is actually going to possibly appear in the next few coming months as we change our programming system over that it may be antiquated anyway. So not, I shouldn't say antiquated, I should say may not be compatible with what we're going to be doing as well. So, you know, I think when we interview too, and we've done things in the past, that as we interview people, those things do come up and we make sure that that's on, this is just, you know, a template to make sure that we're doing, keeping up to date.
And if I add this in there, this is not tying anything down aside from just saying you should have some skills in the MS products. It doesn't say you can't have them in any others, nor could you be required to learn them or know them.
Mr. Mayor, I possibly, I worded this incorrectly. The reason that you put these in like this and that actually at the non-professional level, you spell them out, is that these are the kinds of programs that are readily accessible to people and if they can do these programs, it doesn't matter what system you're on or what spreadsheet program you're going to use, if they can work these programs, they can work almost any other programs. They do, you just need a little bit of education. The problem is, is when, and I've done this so many times, hired somebody who said, oh, yes, I know how to use a computer, I'm real comfortable. And then you say, okay, good, you look at the emails and answer the emails for the day or, or jet the important emails to me and they're like, how do you do that? You haven't spelled out how to use contacts or how to use Outlook or, you know.
And I can see that being a concern. And I think the, the big general thing with this was to, to put in other things that, or other duties that weren't there, other than secretarial, because that's, that's a pretty, that's a pretty minimum, or a small, small section of what she does in that. That was the intent of this behind her. I think it's covered in there and the reason being is that this wouldn't be our job, this wouldn't be the job posting if we were able to do, if she ever leaves, man, I'm going with her, but she, but she, and that's kind of why I said, like I said, a little bit, a little bit of insurance, but this wouldn't be our job this day anyways. This would be just a, a general guideline of what we'd do and how we would, how we would go about hiring people.
So.
But I can understand, I, I appreciate it, not to exaggerate. I think we've got it covered, but that, that stuff doesn't, wouldn't bother me if it was added.
We're, see, I think you all have, and I've been here, but it talks about somebody being, being able to handle especially mail and, email and.
Where are you looking?
See.
Essential duties is your, no, is what the job is.
Modern office practices.
The next section is the duties or the education and experience. And that's where you want to put the skills that you have, is in that section. And that's where it's under C is there, you got to know computers, electronic mail, internet, modern office practices, you can include there, including skills in MS office products.
Products, software.
Oh, just, when I just say skills, it's saying you do have to know how to use Microsoft Office, which includes Word, Excel, PowerPoint. But it doesn't say you can't know everything else.
I don't, I just want to pigeonhole the police learning how to provide that.
And I think if you say skills, it doesn't, it doesn't lock you down to any.
Well, over to some modern office practices, or just computers, which would be MS products, Linux or whatever type of work process you've got, would be a modern office product policy.
At least my experience on computers, as soon as I see somebody say, I know Linux, okay, they know Microsoft already, take my word for it. Because it's kind of a specialized.
Correct. And that's exactly, when, and when they know MS Office, then they, they know everything that trickles down underneath that. It's kind of a.
They can learn, they don't necessarily know, they can learn.
But they can learn, yes.
I would agree with that.
If you use the words or similar to, I'll be happy.
Okay. Or similar.
Good.
And thank you for bringing that stuff up, the stuff that I don't speak about too, so I appreciate that.
So we're putting that under C?
C, under education. I took it, that was a motion, right?
Yeah, yes.
We have a second, second. Okay. Now we can go even further.
If they're going to make changes, page 67, 102, or the third page.
First, let's finish this.
Okay.
Let's just vote if it's acceptable to have that, including skills in MS products, office products, or similar to. All those in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Take that as unanimous. Now, now.
Under conclusion, first line, last word of that line is they. Is that the right word in that sense? Or should it be that or which?
Man, that might be that.
That might be.
Yeah. Thanks for catching that. Spelling check, we have grammar and that will buy easier. Any others?
Call for a question.
Questions been called for to approve as amended the law enforcement liaison job description. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Take that as unanimous, as amended. Next one, we just had the public hearing. We need to approve the 2020 Transportation Coordination Plan for the City Bus.
Love to approve second.
It's been moved by Dan, seconded by Russ. Discussion. Just for the information, this is a required document to go try to get grants. So they got to have this planned out here. Last one, question. Public cabinet comment? Hey, I heard the question being called for. All those in favor of approving the 2020 Transportation Coordination Plan for the City Bus, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. I take that as unanimous. Thank you. Okay, next one is ministerial, but we still put it on there, otherwise we would have forgot it, is to approve Ken, Matt Kenriley, councilperson Kenriley, be absent from the state approximately February 11th to February 26th.
He's got to stay here.
Unless you're not leaving now.
Oh, I'm leaving.
Love to approve second.
Are you, are you taking that Princess Cruz off of Yokohama?
No.
No.
Not sure, that's out floating now. Dan made motion, Russ seconded. Any further discussion?
Call for a question.
Person called for to approve, let, councilperson Kenriley be absent from the state for approximately February 11th to February 26th, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Take that as unanimous.
You just can't take your wife with you. Do you?
If you can, I got her a subpoena.
I know. We need to save the.
I was that guy.
I'm going to hear about it at dinner whenever we get to that.
Okay, next one, reports of officers, boards of the city library board. We'll start with Matt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your package, you will see, and we ask for your approval of meeting minutes for November 26th, 2019, and December 19th, 2019.
Love to accept. Second. It's been moved by Russ, seconded by Dan. Any discussion?
Uh, what was the delay in the minutes?
Not sure. I brought it up at the last meeting, I asked Lori, who was here, and she said, well, I, we didn't, I turned him in, so I don't know where that fell through.
Plus, I got, I think you need to realize that board meetings have to be approved at the board, then they come to here. So it truly takes about a month.
We're half a month or two months behind because our November meeting gets approved in December, at the end of December, and we, once a month, and which in turn, then you guys get it in January, and whether it makes it in time for that first meeting or...
And then the holidays.
Yes.
At the same point.
Yep.
That's the issue with the board.
Yep.
Call for a question. Questions been called for to accept the November 26th and the December 19th, 2019 meeting minutes of the library board. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Take that as unanimous. Does Matt have any more to say or want to pass it to Lori?
I'll pass it to Lori. Lori, you sat here long enough. I'll let you speak.
I got my kid in bed before I came back. So library's been really busy. We have a ton happening with meetings and things like that in the library. We have fly tying on Tuesday nights, a genealogy class in the middle of Wednesdays, in which our computers are not available from 1:00 to 3:00 to the public because they're being used for class from 1:00 to 3:00 on Wednesdays. And we have, there was something else that was happening in the library this last week. I don't remember, but it's been really busy and we've picked up again, oh, we have Dungeons and Dragons now. So we have kids after school that come and play Dungeons and Dragons. I'm going to be gone March 13th. I'll be back in the office on the 18th.
March, when will you be back?
The 18th of March.
Okay.
Yep. So if you need anything, you can text me.
Hope to respond.
I don't, I don't know what kind of cell coverage I'll have in the middle of the desert, so, but I can't, I don't know. Do you guys have any questions for me?
No.
No? Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Next item, city attorney, Mr. Dolan.
Well, thank you. I'll start with some of the criminal work. Seems to be proceeding as usual. We've got two, possibly three jury trials coming up. We closed in January nine cases that had 14 separate citations throughout, distributed throughout those nine cases. And we received seven new cases with 10 new citations in those seven cases. Deb, of course, has been pulling it up, dirty, getting through the audit with the MDT. And I know that she's pretty busy with that. On the civil side, I was, was working on looking through the Saxon file. I can advise the council that that's still in the discovery phase. There, the NMI Council wants to take a deposition of the plan. I don't know quite when that's going to be noticed of yet, so I'll pay attention to that. And been involved in some planning and zoning matters, including pine air meadows, the access for that issues, and the ownership of some roads that may or may not be in dispute regarding its holy springs. Hopefully, we can get that on the planning board agenda soon at some point, get something along with that. And I want to take a moment. I have reached out to Kelly Lynch of, of League of Towns and Cities, and she's quite busy. And so I'm going to try and see if we can arrange a training for, for adjustment and zoning, but I haven't heard back yet. But I, I don't, I don't know if she'll be able to do it or not, but I'm just holding it out there to let you know that it's kind of something I'm trying to, trying to make out and tell everybody. And working with the judiciary on public nuisance issues and obviously the baseball contract with the parks.
Any questions? Well, thank you, Jim. Finding board, Mr. Hand. We have plugged through a couple different things, but present, there's no meeting minutes, so therefore no report. Thank you. Zoning board. Let's have Raymond.
That's enough.
Well, before you, here we'll find the minutes from November 12th. We've got a whole list on here. Okay, we have a November 12th meeting, November 12th hearing, November 26th meeting, January 14th, joint zoning and finding board, January 14th meeting, and January 28th meeting.
Love to approve second. It's been moved by Dan, seconded by Don, discussion. Just so you see, we've been busy. Anybody have any corrections? Love to approve. Okay. I heard a question called, right? That to accept the November 12th, 2019 public hearing minutes, the November 12th meeting minutes, November 26th meeting minutes, the January 14th joint zoning board finding board meeting minutes, the January 14th, 2020 meeting minutes, and the January 28th, 2020 meeting minutes of the zoning commission. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. I take all of that as unanimous.
As you can see by the January 28th meeting, we're ready to start back into the zoning process in a couple of places, so we'll be quite busy. Any questions? Any questions?
Thank you. Thank you. Correct operation, Mr. Hazelbaker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don't relax, anything real earth shattering, but, uh, well, just, uh, thank Jamie Olson and Debbie Pierce for their hard work in getting the audit done, uh, for the bus. I know I took Debbie away from Jim for a couple of days, and I know Jean was great helping get the information for that audit, so. Looking forward to seeing that audit. But, uh, it sounds like everything went very well for that. And also, uh, we had a situation with the bus today. I don't know why I get emotional over this stuff, but. I really appreciate, uh, Glenn Maritz today. Went to pick somebody up, and he recognized that they were, uh, needed emergency. He knows if they are found to be, uh, in a state where they need medical assistance, he cannot put them on the bus. But he took the time to call 911. Police responded within three minutes. He appreciated that. And he stayed until the police arrived, and then he was able to move on. But, it just shows dedication. The glad house. That he could easily ignore her, and said, sorry, I can't give you a ride. But he took the time to call 911, offered her blankets. So it's... So with that, I'd be happy to take any questions. Sorry for being a big boop. I guess that's important.
Hair, hair, good one.
Yes.
Agreed.
You can be a little rough on the edges, please. It's kinda pretty dark.
Jim, hand in those tissues.
But also, I'd like to thank Diane Armstrong for all the time she puts in, four minutes. I know that, uh, she sometimes takes, uh, some criticism, well, I'm not sure criticism is the right word, but some questions about, uh, she does a great job, and she really is dedicated to that job. Appreciate all the work she does. Hanging out with me on Tuesday, Thursday nights. I don't even get, I don't even get cookies out of them either.
Not just that, all the committees. I know Stacy does a couple, but she does more, the majority of them, Diane does. So, we appreciate, appreciate them both. Even though some of them are sitting here thinking that they're not wanting to do this much anymore. Talk them into it again. So, we do appreciate you doing all that.
Thank you.
Glad to be happy to answer any questions. Hopefully, my makeup didn't run too much through the TV.
Your eyeliner looks fine.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Todd.
Good for my daughter.
Do you remember Tammy Pay?
Oh, I see. They always did, they got looked like her. No, the avian lady didn't blow up on my face, Todd.
I think that one's like question for him.
Hey, so he's moving on earlier.
Cause I definitely know if they needed to bring that to you or Streets and Alley. But Seabree, we finished the end of it down the right of church this spring, but I think it was the last, it's the spring before, they did a long stretch of new pavement. And where they met that up with the old, I noticed that that sunk quite a bit.
Well, actually, if you would, if we would take a measurement on it, it looks like it's that way, but really, it's the opposite. Those, the new sections don't move at all. The rest of it rises.
Rises, okay.
Cause they all got clay, so we remove a lot of big chunk, or whatever we end up leaving, cause we can't take all the clay out.
Yeah.
So, but wherever stays, we put that mat down.
Yeah.
What I call a mat, that fiber. And that holds the clay down. It still might raise, but it doesn't rise, or rise, raise, whatever, you should proper. You know, it doesn't go as much. But those places do not have the mat underneath, and they still got a bunch of clay. And so, as soon as the water gets under the asphalt, and there's a lot of cracks, so water gets down there pretty fast. And then it freezes, the water expands, and so it just rises the street. So all these areas that we fix, that's why it's tough, that's why I don't really like to go patching, I know there's, you don't have an option, you got to. But when we go patching, we fix it right, but everything else rises, so it looks like that one sunk, but it didn't, it stays exactly where it was, it just, everything else around it rises. And it'll sink back, everything will go back down, cause usually when we do it, it has to do with summer. When you don't have as much water, it's unfrozen.
Okay.
And, I mean, there is still water in the clay, even through the driest time, the clay holds that water good. But, it'll stay there, and it does shrink a lot.
Okay.
And so that's when we fix it, during the summer, everything nice and flat.
Right.
In the winter, everything expands up that has the clay underneath. I got no fix for it, besides we fix all the streets, and we're going through it, but...
Okay.
He's right.
Okay. Next item is police department, Chief Everson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just have a quick, few things to say. I'm gonna piggyback on Todd a little bit, he kinda took my thunder away. Um, yeah, so, I just wanted to thank, um, your staff, Rob Duppy and Nick, that it's worked in a, in a new evidence room that's been much needed for a long time. And, uh, they did a great job, it's gonna, it's gonna be a huge impact for us, uh, a lot of, in a lot of ways, and, uh, I think it just shows the level of cooperation that people have here. And, um, not only me, but everybody else at the, at the, um, at City Hall, and how they've been dealing with me lately, which is really very nice. Um, I'm going, I think...
Real quick, that room is available now for you guys to move into.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you.
Council, just for your information, we're not helping you move.
Oh, yeah, no, you don't want to.
You get to do this.
I agree, I agree. Um, so with that being said, and I, and I, I think I've mentioned this before, is, um, I've been going through some health issues, and I just wanna, I just wanna thank my staff, um, and the staff over here, including the mayor, Jamie, Diane, everyone that's over here, and, uh, and my staff, for the amount of help that they've given me, and how they've stepped up, is, it's, I can't, I, I knew that they were good at their jobs, I knew that I could count on them. I did not know the level of, um, the level of support that I have, uh, with them. You all in the city don't have a group of people at that police department and at City Hall here, that are just unprecedented people. Um, and then, I'm not talking about the way they do their job, I'm not talking about anything, you have great, great people that work here. And, um, I couldn't be happier with the staff that I have, and I just wanted to kinda put that out there, Jeremy Alvarez has taken a, a leadership role when I've been gone that I couldn't have imagined, that, that anyone could have. Um, I'm very, I'm very blessed to have the staff that I have. Um, and I just wanted to give them a little, a little heads up for that, because, um, it's just been, it's been huge for me to be able to go through what I'm, what I'm going through with that work, and all that's going on, of course. They've been great. So, with that being said, as far as actual work goes, um, we were very busy last, last month, um, you know, we had a couple of incidents, it really took a lot of time and, and effort, but they, we're getting through them, and we're almost through them now. And, uh, we've just been busy with a ton of felonies. You know, Jim, even the misdemeanor system, for some reason, they've gone, gone way up. And we've had staffing, staffing issues with, uh, Eric Pedersen just came back, um, from his, his injury. But even Eric was able to do and be released for light duty when we were doing some, um, some stuff on this, uh, previous homicide. So he was able to watch places for us, he was able to, you know, do some things that, you know, we just couldn't have done without him. And he did that for us, because, cause that's who he is. So, um, I just wanna thank everybody for, for looking out for me, as I continue on this, on this journey, so to speak. And, um, I just appreciate everything everybody's doing. So, thank you. And any questions or comments or anything? I'll try to, I'll try to tell you what Jeremy's been, how Jeremy's been doing my job, and... No, if you have any questions, I'm, I'm pretty happy to update you on that, so.
Chief, how, how long do you have to keep all that evidence for us, or something to dispose of?
No, we can dispose of it, and we do. We go through it, dispose of a lot, but if there's a lot of things you can't. It depends, each case kinda has their own, their bible, so to speak, on how, how things, like felonies, for instance, you have to keep them 10 years after a final appeal. So, if someone goes to, if someone goes to jail for life, you get evidence for life. So, um, depending on large felonies too, uh, after a person is paroled, I think it's five years after they're paroled that you can get rid of it by. So, I mean, a lot of that stuff you have to keep for a long time. Luckily, we don't have a ton of that stuff, but you still, you have to, you have to be able to keep the evidence, um, past a certain amount of appeals on felony cases.
But I assume we have some system to keep track of that, so you don't...
Oh, yeah.
...or whatever.
Yeah, no, we, we have, it's not a, it's not an evidence problem, it's a storage problem. And I, and everywhere it goes through it, you just run out of room. You know, that, that's all it is, and so, um, we just did, we don't have the room, and we do now. And it's gonna be, with our new system, everything's gonna, it's gonna be slick. And it helped out, it's, I'm, I'm mints him out.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions, too? Thank you, thank you, Chief. Fire department, DJ Closey, assisted fire chief.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, in front of you, you'll find, um, our bills for January.
Nope, no, no. You didn't get it.
Okay. Alright, I'm...
That's next, next meeting.
Okay. Alright. Okay, well, um, it was sitting on top of my file, so I assumed that they were, but, okay. Um, we've had a pretty, pretty quiet month, uh, January, um, nothing, nothing real earth shattering. Engine one is up and running, back and service completely, everything's ready to go. Ladder truck is, everything else, um, as far as pretty good. Uh, we will have the DOT inspections done on, on everything in March. Coming up next year in 2021, we will have to have a complete recertification of the ladder truck, which will be a little bit more money, so, um, we'll work with, probably whoever the, uh, new fire chief is, um, we will go through and maybe start setting up budgeting for those kinda things, and, uh, sorry, I got, got a little bit of a cold, but, um, other than that, it's been pretty quiet.
We'll actually take the ladder department to recertification.
Uh, they will actually come here and do it.
They use it, isn't that one that's big, long, about the size of the fire truck?
And, yeah.
You know, come on down with all the equipment on there to test it.
Right. I have a question. Isra.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I, I was wondering if there is a report on the, uh, progress for a new fire chief?
Yes, I'm working with city attorney to generate, what's a holdup now is an MOU? And I'm working on the MOU to see what power should the, uh, board of trustees for the fire district have over a certain personnel? Like, have what over the, and we're looking into what the law allows. Especially if they are a city employee, can we give away some of our duties as a city, or, you know, they're your employee of the city? And that's a, having Jim helping me work to write through, what can we actually say or do with the MOU? So it's not ready yet, but I'm hoping fairly soon, so sometime maybe the end of this month, we can have a fire order with the revised MOU. I'm not promising that, I'm hoping that, okay?
Well, it'll be interesting to, uh, hear the answers to those questions.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Rich. Uh, I have a question. Yes, Mr. Ross. Hi, as I understand, this is a continuing issue, so, uh, where I live, um, and it does differ with wind conditions, whatnot, but many times, I can't hear the sirens at all. Uh, it doesn't even wake the cat up. Can you hear them?
Yes, uh, but that's good, you're lucky. Good.
I was a volunteer fireman.
One second, Rich, um, where do you live? You over...
Or, or in Iowa.
So, in certain situations, the, there are three sirens now. One at the fire hall, one at the search and rescue, and one at the college. Certain situations, if there was a earthquake, um, I'm not sure what the complete, uh, set of SOP is, but most of the time, the, the alarm at the college does not go off. Certain situations, earthquake.
Is that just because of protocols?
Right, right, there's, there's no sense in, um, setting that alarm off on that end for, for the majority of the time, unless it's a major event. And then, in those situations, there are different tones that would be, uh, played over, I guess, uh, over the PA system.
But also, when the siren goes off, that's just sort of telling the general public that there's something going on.
Just a heads up to...
The fire department, every one of them has a pager. And so, they get paged, you'll, you'll hear the pager go off, and then the siren later.
Well, I, I just mention it because the old siren, it would wake up the dead where we were.
Well, and like you said, depending on the direction of wind, I live a mile north of town, and if the wind is blowing kinda that direction, I can hear it, it'll wake me up.
But it's nothing you're overly concerned about.
No. Any other questions? Any other question? Thank you, DJ, thank you. Uh, no city, no treasure, tree board. I don't see the minutes, but...
No, uh, well, we are the, kind of like the library board. Um, our tree board usually meets on the first Tuesday of the month, but this month, we postponed our meeting till the second Tuesday, which is next Tuesday in the evening, so that we can have the mayor at our meeting. Uh, so you'll receive the January minutes in your next packet.
Yep. I'm cordially invited. Thank you. Okay, reports to the standing committees, the city council, judiciary, Mr. Hand.
Yes, before you, you have the minutes of January 22nd, ask for your approval.
Love to approve second. But that was Don made or Matt?
Matt.
Matt, and Russ seconded, okay.
Another question?
Discussion.
Uh, item to discuss recommended emergency contact registration. Could you give me benefit of some discussion of how did this come about, and how were the specific 10 items decided upon?
It was recommended that we should have some sort of contact information, and I don't remember for sure who brought it up, but the...
It's not a federal requirement?
No. And the 10 items were, some of the items that I would like on there.
I'm sorry?
The chief of police would like on there, and we're gonna, we've decided to table this so that we can get with the chief of police and the chief, fire chief, so we can discuss some of these, before we go further.
Okay. So it was somehow a local genesis of, I think this was a good idea, or what?
Yes. It's truly, three years ago, we had a gas leak downtown on Idaho Street, and many of the tenants upstairs were not aware of such, because the business owners downstairs did not share that information, and then truly the fire went max. Last cast was another situation, they have a lot of apartments upstairs, and people do not know if they're there or not there, especially emergency facilities. But I think that's where a simply a line of communication actually started, this started about four years ago.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I know that the, the fire department also had a statement too, that they were concerned. One of the big things that started it was the bad rest labels on, you know, the addressing of the buildings, the apartment stuff, cause the apartment started, we didn't really... because the apartment started, we didn't really, if the fire started, we didn't know what apartment they were, how many people were in there, and that kind of thing. Um, it's just a safety issue, it's for anything other than those kind of things.
I know in the Max last cast, uh, fire, there had previously been some discussion here about, um, the situation with Northwest Energy, and having somebody shut the gas off, et cetera, et cetera, and what would have happened, what if, uh, someone hadn't kind of taken it upon themselves to solve that, that issue? If that person hadn't been available and, and taken the decision to do that, would any of this have ameliorated that situation which might have developed?
No.
Well, I, I guess I hadn't had an opportunity to read through this, um, before right now. Um, there is protocol as far as who we are to call. Um, Northeastern Energy now has a person in town, and they have added a second between here and Sheridan, so between Dillon and Sheridan, there are three people.
Well, what I was trying to add was, uh, when we were discussing that, it was either you or someone else.
Excuse me.
You, okay, had made the comment, uh, if it hadn't been for the actions of that person, we would be looking at a empty block and half there. Um, and so, obviously, that's got human cause potentially. Uh, if it had gotten to that stage, would this have ameliorated some of that issue?
Well, I don't know that a, a piece of paper is going to mitigate any, you know, all situations, but, um, if that person hadn't done that, there, there are two or three other people that would have stepped in and, and...
But with this, you'd know exactly who's...
Yes.
Who, where?
Yep.
And under what circumstances they're living?
Right.
I think this was a lot, a lot of this had to do with evacuation situations, not, you know, stuff that's happening right at that time. If there was a gas leak or if there's a possibility of something, you know, occurring there, that we were able to go in and make sure everybody's okay. So, I think it's more of a safety issue that, not as a, as an action plan when something is happening.
But it, it definitely, I can see the, a, a very positive out, uh, outcome in this. Just by reading through the ten, it would, it would make a huge difference for us as, as what we feel that we're up against. Disabled people or worse. Right. We would be able to, to, uh, is this gonna be in a format that's really available?
We're working on it.
Okay.
So, this, this is still working.
Right, right, and if you'd like any help, give me a, any input, I would be, be happy to...
Yeah, before we...
Yep.
I think it's a great idea.
Any other question on the minutes?
Well, I'm sorry, that would go along with, um, pre-plans, and that is one of the things that I would assume, or I would propose that even the fire chief would be, um, working on. And that's, that's been in the back of my mind, and we've been discussing it, but nobody has had the time, you know, working a regular job plus doing that. Pre-plans are, uh, imagine it would be a very important part of this puzzle.
Russ, just clerical page two, six and seven, should be seven and eight. You skipped the number six.
Sorry. Questions being called for to approve as amended, the January 21st, 2020 meeting minutes of the judiciary committee, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Take that as unanimous.
And also, we have one action item before you, and it's the approval of the first reading of an ordinance in the Dillon Municipal Code Title VI, Chapter IV, cable television franchises.
Move to approve.
Okay. It's been moved by Russ, seconded by Raymond, discussion.
Okay, some of this, you'll see through here that there's a lot of stuff crossed out, but we have a contract already signed, and so, this is basically what the new con, or the contract that we have now says. We can't really change anything until we go to do another contract. So, we, uh, the matter has gone through and crossed out things that are no longer in the, the existing contract, and...
The existing contract, who's back on?
Pardon me?
Oh, yes. Well, it's for his president, they called it, I think.
Yeah.
When does it expire?
We've got another ten years left on this contract. It's a twenty-year-long contract.
And it was signed in 2010. And so, what I was doing is, I'm trying to go through all the ordinances and getting them all up to date, fixing if there's old code that the state government, we should get rid of them too. We were going through that, and I hit this one and noticed that, that, uh, they signed the new contract in 2010, and we were actually, the ordinance was the old contract. And so, I thought, well, let's fix it up. Not that we can change anything, but, you know, change the ordinance to match what the contract says. That's where this came from. Any further questions, or?
Call for questions.
Questions being called for to approve the first reading of an ordinance amending the Dillon Municipal Code Title VI, Chapter IV, uh, the cable television franchises. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? I take that as unanimous. They'll be back on again next meeting for second reading, so... Anything else, Dan?
No, we'll have another meeting in about a couple of weeks.
Yes. Next Tuesday's water sealed and the Tuesday after will be judicial.
I guess that's something that we're already gonna be working on.
Well, we just handed that out today, so... Along with all the other stuff that we had given to you guys as action items. Uh, finance committee, Mr. Han. Before you, the package is our meeting minutes for January 30th, 2020, ask for your acceptance.
Move to approve, second.
It's moved by Dan, seconded by Russ, discussion. All the questions. Questions being called for to approve the January 30th, 2020 meeting minutes, uh, finance committee, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? I take that as unanimous. I also ask for your approval of line item, budget report for January 2020, the fund summary for claims for 2020, claims by vendor report for 2020, and the budget versus actual report for January 2020.
Move to approve, second.
And that's for all four?
Correct.
Okay. It's been moved by Dan, seconded by Matt, any discussion?
Call for the question.
Questions being called for to approve the line item, budget report, the fund summary for claims, the claims by vendor report, and the budget versus actual report, all of those for January 2020. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? I take that as unanimous. What did you get married for? Sorry. Thank you. Next item, fire order, uh, Russ. Your first one on the lines. Um, no minutes, no report. Thank you. Thank you. Health and welfare, Russ again. Before you, the minutes from January 16th for your approval.
Move to approve, second.
It's been moved by Dan, seconded by Matt, discussion?
Uh, I have some discussion with the health and welfare committee, but not necessarily the votes for these ones.
Okay, let's vote the minutes, and then you can ask the questions on them. This one gets lost. Any questions on the minutes themselves?
Call for the question.
Questions being called for to approve the January 16th, 2020 meeting minutes of the health and welfare committee, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? I take that as unanimous. Okay, Russ, or Rich, I mean?
My question is this. We, uh, we're in a rural environment here, so we're lucky, in many respects, but in respect to the current Wuhan coronavirus developing pandemic, we might think of ourselves as totally isolated, but we're really not, we're on an interstate. Uh, we've got people coming and going that, uh, that go through this commit, community, uh, either visiting or live here, that are going through our airport and or Bozeman, or any of the, or any of the other nearby airports. Uh, so, um, has the health and welfare committee done anything preliminarily in terms of brainstorming or, and or planning with Barrett and all of the state health authorities this quarter with the coronavirus?
Okay, uh, by ordinance, we changed the ordinance in the, under the health and welfare, and we got it set up that the chairman, president, chairman of the committee, and the mayor had, is gonna be, they're appointed to be the members of the city county health board. And the duties of the health board, along with the county has three appointees, and Lima has one. So, that board is created, they go over, and we get reports from the hospital, from DE, not DEQ, what's it, DES? DS, uh, health, the health nurse, not our health nurse, but, uh, Ms. Hanson?
County health nurse.
County health nurse. Uh, I'm trying to remember, veterinary?
They're veterinary, we have on the emergency facility. Basically, it encompasses everything, and then we fall under the state.
Right.
But we have not looked at this as of yet when we met a week ago, where our biggest concern then was more or less dealing with, um, if we have livestock that comes in from Canada that has to be quarantined. Um, so, we haven't been quarantining, it's just a matter of livestock, we haven't really gone on to this big picture yet, probably because it hasn't hit locally.
But they did, from what I remember, not to interrupt you, but they did, uh, report every so often, the hospital, along with, uh, Tom Wagonette with the DES and that, they run drills every so often. I remember they did a drill that, let's say there's a, and I can't remember what the infectious disease was, but they say, okay, there's an outbreak, what would happen? They actually had people running to the hospital, going through that process, what would happen? It turns out, most of the time, we won't have enough vaccines to help everybody on some of this stuff, so they would have to make decisions and all that, that's all discussed, they go through training, to try to see whether they can handle it the best if it ever happens. So, they actually do go through quite a bit.
We, yeah, we do, annually, every, every year, uh, the state requires that Bearden County health nurse get together with all entities that are, are put together, and they'll do a large scale training, about two years, I think it is, isn't it? But we've gone through so many of those from where they had like, uh, basically deal like you said, infectious disease, used the challenge program inundated the hospital. Uh, we set up, um, uh, triage stations at the college, uh, and it, it goes really well. And especially like what you're saying too, with infectious diseases, and, uh, like this Wuhan virus, obviously, I don't think we're getting the, we're not getting the vaccines, because they're not made yet, uh, you know, yet, but for other things, I know they did with the SARS virus and all that, as we have scheduled out. The state has so many anecdotes and those kind of things that they put aside for each community, so those are all, we would have ways to get them and who transports them here, and so, it's all, it's all briefed and, and, uh, we'll see how good it, hopefully, we don't have to see how good it works, but we do train, we do have, we do, yeah, absolutely.
Well, I just wondered if you're relying upon the state to kind of take the lead and...
No.
Decide when to worry about it and how to worry about it.
No, I think that, yeah, I think this is moving too fast right now in what it is and what it isn't, I don't think it's famous even know yet, so I think that's what we're gonna...
Well, there's a, there's a thing called the R not factor, and, uh, it's kind of a basic measure of how fast a, uh, pathogen is gonna be transferred from one individual to another if it's contagious. And, um, I, I did my homework before I asked this question. The experts don't even know.
Exactly.
They're, they're all over the place from 1.4 R not to 5.0 R not, and, and that's a vast difference in terms of how quick it's gonna progress, uh, if it's gonna progress. And so, the realities of recent days seems to point to the fact that it may be closer to the five figure than it is to the 1.4 figure. And if so, uh, unless it, something else intervenes to stop the process, I mean, we are looking at something eventually probably gonna hit Montana for sure, and if not our community. We should, we should think about it ahead of time before we have to start putting up the tents.
Well, I think, yeah, I think that that's, you know, definitely on the health, the health side of things, but if it does hit before we are, we're, we're prepared to do the best we can with what we got. I think that's at this point is all you can hope for, something like that. Many things can happen, but you can only prepare for the worst, you know? Hope, hope for the best, prepare for the worst, who was it that said that? Churchill?
No, I don't think it was Churchill.
Yeah, because truly, that's exactly where we're at, we're looking at backup for the 911, the phone system went down.
Yeah.
People were complaining because of Facebook, you know what, there's things called 911, way more important than Facebook. And then that's a discussion that we're working on, you know what I mean? Luckily, at Madison, and they actually helped us back us up for the 911, I mean, a lot of you don't realize, it crippled us.
Oh, it did.
And luckily, we had a backup that went around the back way through Madison and actually got the phones into here. So, I mean, it did cripple Bearden County.
Yep. Well, and you can see that, you know, people become so reliant on things like the internet and Facebook and stuff that, you know, Labor Day, like, we see every year, we got a bunch of people here, no one can get on the internet, because everybody's on the internet. So, when something does happen, we can't even respond to certain things because people can't get out to us, so it's, you know, those kind of infrastructure things are a big problem as well, but we deal with them, not everything's gonna be perfect, you have to deal with them.
And it's tough, and when those things happen, that people, how do you get ahold of emergency vehicles if nobody can phone? And that was what those things have, phones wouldn't work.
How do you get ahold of the...
Emergency vehicles, or emergency help, if nobody can phone out. And so, we were, at those times, I know two of the times, I'm not sure, we actually had police driving the streets, hopefully, you know, to be out there visible that if somebody had something going on, at least we have a shot at getting them attention, and then they could go to radio. Because most time, even this time, our radios kind of had problems.
Yeah.
So, we went through, Madison County had theirs going, and they led us peeking back on it. So, otherwise, we would have been in trouble.
Smoke signals.
Yeah, probably worked best, yeah, sometimes.
You have the big zombie apocalypse game?
We did have a zombie apocalypse, yeah. Yeah, it's, it's kind of funny that they, they do those things, that they kind of, they curtail them to what interests people, so people come to, but it's really the same thing, you know, just about the makeup, you hope, but, uh, yeah, so...
Depending on how the disease spreads.
You just don't know, and...
That's why biting eaten brains.
Yeah.
Um, Wes Craven, everyone wants to do him, but he's here, we'll be prepared.
That's right.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I guess it's opportune that the next item is cemetery committee?
Oh. Okay, are we done? Are we finished with your question? But it is a concern, and it's, and it's tough, it really is, it's... There's a lot of unknowns and like, and right now, there's, if it comes and it really hits hard, if there isn't even a vaccine to help, all you can do is give them shelter, give them help. if there isn't even a vaccine to help, all you can do is give them shelter, give them help, comfort. But it's yard bought.
They got a cruise ship of 3,700 people, Princess Cruises off of Yokohama. And now it's just out at sea without a port to go to. And it's going to be quarantined for two weeks before anybody will deal with it.
I understand. Okay, Dan Russ, thank you. Senate committee.
I was just...
I went away, didn't know.
No, we didn't.
I have a question, we have not approved them.
Oh, yeah, we did. You need to help them over?
Wait for it.
I got it as voted unanimous.
I thought we did.
There it is.
Yeah.
I missed a few, Russell. Well, this whole is many, we did it right. Cemetery committee, Matt.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your package, you will see the meeting minutes, January 13th. I ask for your approval.
Need to approve second. It's been moved by Russ, seconded by Dan, discussion.
Open question.
Question has been called for to approve the January 13, 2020 meeting minutes of the cemetery committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I take that as unanimous.
Uh, be happy to answer any questions if they're ready.
Okay, move on then, nay, yep. Done parts, don't want to go back. City health committee. Mr. Graham. For you, your final minutes from our December 16, 2020 meeting, I ask for your approval.
Need to approve second.
It's been moved by, was it Dan or Russ? Dan, and we'll put Rich on for second. Discussion.
Yes, it's the minutes of December 16, 2019.
Yeah, you're right, all this, we're used to.
Now, we're just looking in the future. We're done with that.
That was a good year.
Under item number two, go to the very bottom of it, where the word roof is, go up three lines. I believe there's an extra S in the first word, where it says moves, I think it should just be move.
Say that again.
Where are we? Okay, on the first page.
Yeah.
Item two.
Yeah.
Good, good, out of where you use one, one word sentence that says roof, right above the paragraph.
Right.
And then go up two lines from that. So it's, first word says moves walls.
Okay.
Then it's just supposed to be move walls.
Okay.
Yeah, can we get rid of the S? Some of these. Any other changes?
Call for the question.
Question has been called for to approve the January 16, 2019, or no? Yeah. So our, our thing was even wrong. December 16, 2019. Wow, that one missed, we hop away. Approved the December 16, 2019 meeting minutes of the city hall committee as amended. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. I take that as unanimous. I'm, yeah, I'm thinking that, uh...
This is
It was January 16.
This is January 16, 2020. It shouldn't, it shouldn't be January.
That's right. Okay, the minute should say January and 2020 is okay.
Yeah.
And the minute, or the agenda was okay.
Right.
All the way. That's a lot better. Yeah, I thought it said January, I mean, I'm, anyway. So we have one action policy here, action item, anyway. And that is to approve the drug and alcohol policies for the city of Dillon, I ask for your approval.
Need to approve second.
It's been moved by Russ, seconded by Dan, discussion. Can somebody explain why this doesn't bother these officers?
We're fine with it, it's announced, we've tried to for a long time.
I think, uh... I believe it was exempted from anybody that carries a gun for safety reasons. Why?
Well, I carry a gun for safety reasons.
You're exempted then?
Yeah. What are the reasons that you carry a gun?
I think we wanted to, this was brought mainly to the purpose of the bus. And so we tried to narrow the felony involved in the bus people without giving any But we have added though, if you have a CDL that works at the city and uses a CDL, we require drug testing for that. But if the police, we, we get so nervous on this stuff with the union too.
Oh, they're willing to do it. Our, our biggest problem is, is I recall is the testing, random testing stuff is pretty expensive. And with our, the way that our menu is set up and the way our policy is set up, I can test them anytime anyways if there's
During business hours, they can be tested.
Correct. I know ours, I don't know about the city employees.
I actually brought that up in, in the city hall and I thought that probably it's got to do this.
And also if there's an accident of some sort involving an employee, they have to go be tested.
Under item two, covered employees. On page three of ten. You'll notice that the city employees aren't under this. They're not specifically exempted yet, but they're not specifically added to it. Because in item number one or above, all city of Dillon employees subject to provision of the Drug Free Workplace Act 198 is starting out. So the street and alley folks, for example, are exempt. As this is written.
Yeah.
Does that mean too?
Well, it's because under covered employees, it says you are a covered employee if you perform any default.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. And one is operating a revenue service, that's the bus.
Yeah.
One is operating non-revenue, if you have to use a driver's, city commercial driver's license.
Right, that's a federal requirement.
And then maintaining and fixing the revenue service of the ones that had to fix the bus, they got to be drug tested.
I even talked to the mechanic down here at Beveritt Motors, he had drug tested.
But they're only, this is employees only, we have no control over them.
Uh, Dan, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm trying to remember the discussions. But wasn't it someone's advice to us that, uh, we lowered this down as much as we could in terms of where employees could apply to?
Well, yeah, but, and we looked at doing all employees, but then we have, it's something that we have to go through, uh, the contract when they, because of the labor union, or because of the union, you have to, it has to be in their contract.
It was also, I think we went under the advice of the city attorney, we looked into it. And state law does not allow you to test everybody. All you're allowed to test is what's here.
That was my memory from our discussions.
And when they put in this line, this was M dot through the feds, trying to shove their rules into the states. And the state does not allow, from what I understand, maybe Jim can correct me or agree with each other way it is, and that it doesn't, the state does not allow us unless they are under those certain duties like we stated.
You have to have an access to public safety, basically. And that's, that was also, like, this policy has to go through MMIA as well, it has to be approved.
Right, so once you guys Item two is still conflicting now. It says it's for all safety sensitive function. Chief, are these officers safety sensitive?
I hope so.
But you start not carrying a firearm for security purposes, you just throw them back out. Is that, was that the intention?
No, I think what the, I think what ours basically was just that from MMIA standpoint, is, uh, the random drug testing. For some reason, I, I wish I could pinpoint it, because the union wanted, the union wanted the, the random drug testing and stuff. But I can't remember that, MMIA, there was, there was some holdup with that. And I can't remember exactly what it was.
Do you recall that?
No. But I think it, but I think that's what it was, it had to do with some kind of personal, it might even have been the fact that you had to write down what your, what prescriptions you were on, stuff like that, prior to the testing and stuff like that. And they were struggling with that as a privacy issue. The union wasn't, MMIA was, but, but there was, there was some weird nuances with it that I was surprised by as well. Because the officers are all like, yeah, let's do that, I mean, they, you know?
Yeah, it seemed appropriate that the peace officer would be incorporated, this was the fireman.
True. Yeah, yeah, but, but like I said, in our policy and stuff like that, we can do it anytime we want. So if there's any ever an issue anyways, we can do it, but just the cost.
And really, it can be added by you guys with the motion. It's still got to go MMIA and they might fail the grip and if they do, then you can send it back to here and
Uh, just like to that, item number two there is conflicting. We ought to have it one way or the other, I don't care which way you have it, it just shouldn't be conflicting. You need to take out the carrying a firearm for security purposes or put that back in or take out the word safety sensitive function. Those appear to me.
Mr. Mayor, am I hearing correctly that if we added it back in, then this policy does not go into effect until MMIA has reviewed it and commented on it? So if they have a problem with it, they would let us know, correct?
And then the union would have to agree to be contractually, but if ours, I don't think we have a problem with that.
I would say if you're going to consider adding police and fire to that, then maybe this needs to go back to the committee and have that discussion. Because that wasn't something we addressed, because I wasn't asked to.
Now, the whole, MMIA would have already looked at this and gives a thumbs up or thumbs down.
I've been in contact with MMIA already, Mr. Mayor. Believe me, they've got questions.
Well, there is a, there is a pretty, there's an expense to it.
Oh, yeah, that's what I thought there, MMIA tested, you're right.
Yeah.
And the problem that we have here is this is pushed on to us by the bus.
Mm-hmm.
They require, if we have the bus, we got to do this. So now we're working to see what level does the city really want to do the drug testing? They started out wanting every employee tested, but I don't believe, I read too, I don't believe state law allows you to do any of that.
It's not, it's not settled that you can do that.
You gotta have a reasonable sense, safety sensitive function.
And that's, and that's where MMIA says, you know, you, if you want, you want to test everybody, fine. Eventually you're probably going to get some decision, because you can't establish a clear access to public safety. So if you're just a clerical worker or something like that, they've said, don't, it's probably not a good idea, because it's not tested yet. But, um, for something, you know, like the waters or employee that works with heavy equipment, that needs to drive something, needs to see how you betcha, because it's also federal as well. And the bus, I mean, all that is all federal regulations anyway, so.
Don't disagree.
You take the, take the money, you got to do this, it's the way it works.
That's true.
Would they, do you think that they would have an issue with, uh, the police being in a, uh, safety sensitive function?
I mean, that's the definition of police.
I, I would say probably not, but again, I mean, that wasn't, that wasn't something we, we were addressing mostly the bus and heavy equipment that the city has offered the city employees, not, not my police personnel. So that's, that's a, that's a completely different subject. I mean, you've got to deal with collective bargaining every minute issues as well, and it's two separate collective bargaining.
And, and this would just be for the, in one discussion, just the random tests. You know, the, the test, if somebody comes to work with booze on their breath or they're acting like they're under the, you know?
You can do it already.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and we have, and we've, in quite a difficult, quite distant past, but we have and we've lost an employee because of it.
I, that's what is, uh, perplexing to me, uh, as Mr. Hand, that this is, uh, supposedly an overarching city policy, city drug and alcohol policy, and the city, or the police are city employees. So I'm not, you know, I question why the city and why the new fire chief would not be included in this.
Well, I think it's just that, because they probably don't include it because we have, we have the resources to handle it. So they probably don't want to cover the whole thing, I don't know about the fire department, but we, we have remedies that we don't have to do that. But, I mean, we all be forward, I'm sure, it would be an issue, so it might be.
Mr. Mayor, will you send this back to committee for further refinement then? Do you want committee or just send it to Jim and I? And we will then ask MI, MMIA, get with the union, the two unions, the police union and the city employee union, see if any of them have a problem with adding carrying a firearm for security purposes. And if they do, we'll come back, if they don't, we'll come back, but we'll have answers either way.
I can do some research.
I also noticed there's another part in here too, it talks about prescription drugs, if there's a potential for them to, uh, cause, what I don't, I don't have to talk next, I didn't record. Basically, impair your ability to drive a vehicle at some point in time before you become unclimatised, I can see it. But afterwards, it says you have to basically go for, uh, help for a drug addiction, as I read it. And I don't think that's appropriate for, uh, for a doctor prescribed medicine other than marijuana possibly.
Page nine.
Page nine, apparently, Russ, there is.
Yeah, and where is it said?
It's, uh, probably somewhere near the beginning here, that we're looking at. Yes, use free legal drugs for every dude, all time, all covered, employees. So if they take blood pressure control medicine, you got to go to the drug.
Well, then, which is prescription drugs.
I'm, I'm on page nine right now, there you go.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I think if we, are there, under prescription drug use?
Uh-huh. Well, it doesn't say you have to get tested, what it says though is if you come in, if you're using a prescription drug and it has a warning label on it, it says you, it will affect your mental function, your motor skills or judgment. Maybe if, if it's affected, then you must report it to the DER. Okay, then, the DER would then talk to medical advice, should be as sought as appropriate while taking such medication, making sure that you can form, perform safety sensitive duties. Right, so most of them are on blood pressure medicine, have to go to the DER right off the top there.
Well, I, I take
It affects your memory.
I take that to mean that the onus for medical advice is put upon the employee for getting the prescription through a, a doctor who is giving him advice. And the employee of having any duty at all is to notify the doctor. Well, I'm a city employee and I'm covered under a policy where I can't be in jobs where I'm having motor sensitive issues that are going to be impaired by this drug, is it okay?
That's another angle, but most of the drugs with blood pressure all carry the warning label. I've yet to see one that doesn't, for example, that's a pretty common drug. So this immediately makes, makes you have to go into the DER.
That's not my
Is that the intent?
That's not my
You're coming out in the other direction, Rich, you're coming out to the backside. I'm coming out from what this actually says. I agree with what you're saying, but I'm saying that we got stated wrong here then, if that's the case.
Well, all you have to do is just report it to Todd. You don't have to go and do anything further.
You just been, been involved as a drug addict. There's the problem with that, because that goes in your form of Jack.
Maybe because you come in and say that I take high blood pressure medication, you're a drug addict?
That just puts you on, on this warning list. Well, I think that what's getting this drug in trouble is because the drug puts a warning label that says, warning, taking this drug make you, will make you drowsy or whatever, so you shouldn't operate, agree if one two, you know how it reacts to you. That's right. And so this is saying that you need to, sort of, tell everybody, I'm taking a drug, it could make me drug funny, but, you know, you have to come in and say, yeah, I've been taking it for three months, it hasn't bothered me or whatever. I agree with that too. But some people actually take a drug, and I was on a drug pill a while back, that, uh, quite frankly, if I, I'd have quit drugs if I stayed on it. And it was, uh, something that It was medicated, it's correct. Right, right, I mean, it wasn't anything to you, it wasn't a blood pressure, it was a heart pill. our pill I was on, but it would put me to sleep, just... And given our... Lots of it.
I mean, there was a, there was a time about 10 years ago that they, we were, this was gonna be put into place, and it was before, it was before Mayor Clacken's term, I remember that, and we did have to write our medication down and give it to the, to the director of operations, any medications that were taken that could be adversely affected or anything like that, and I revealed that.
So, then you had to get clearance?
That's all I did, is roll the, we had listed drugs that, that we were on, and I remember at that time it was a muscle relax or something, that, you know, this is a short period of time, but, yeah, I remember having to put it down, and not, whatever happened with it.
But it was, it wasn't too, I mean, it didn't stop you from performing your duties or...
But it potentially could, that was...
It potentially could, yeah, I don't know. I know some, there's some people that was hard put on there.
That wasn't all employees, though, was it? That was just worst department?
No, I think it was, I think it was all employees were requested to do it, yeah, but I don't, but they didn't go forward with, they didn't go forward with the policy, I think, so it really was kind of...
I guess I would make the motion that we table this item until sometime as the mayor and the city attorney can send this to MMIA and get their approval on it, and discuss the items that we brought up. Well, I will amend my motion to incorporate that in second course.
Okay, we have a motion, seconded, motion by Rand, seconded, may I? Any further discussion? Yes. Question we call for to send, table this issue for now on the drug policy, and send it to have the, myself, the mayor, and city attorney, talk to MMIA, and get their take or approval, however you wanna say it, on the items mainly about the safety sensitive is the police under the firearm section, and, I'm adding here, just drug clerk, and the prescription drug use statement, how it's stated. Right?
Working.
Okay. All those going for questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Okay, I take it unanimous that it's tabled.
Well, that concludes my report. Okay, we'll have another nice, non-issue city hall.
Okay, street and alley committee, Mr. Hand?
No meeting, no report.
Thank you. Water and sewer committee, Mr. Hand? Of course, we had a meeting, the rest of the report.
Before you can back it, we have our meeting minutes from January 14th, 2020, ask your acceptance.
Move to approve second.
It's been moved by Dan, seconded by Matt, discussion.
Call for a question?
Question we call for to approve the January 14th, 2020 meeting minutes of water and sewer committee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? I take that as unanimous.
You'll see in the minutes there, we did have a discussion about watering this out of the pipeline that comes down out of Ronalds Bank, correct? Some ramifications for that. We talked about being able to pay your bill automatically through your checking account from an automatic draw, we're still working on through that as well, as well as other things in the Title 13. If there's questions, that's complete my report.
Okay, thank you. Again, like I said, my favorite. Public comment on items of significant public interest not on the agenda within the jurisdiction of the state.
City now, call for adjournment.
Is there a second?
Second.
That was Matt.
Yes.
So, now, call for adjournment, Matt's second, all those in favor of returning say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? I take that as unanimous.